Good afternoon. I will call to order the October 16th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Magrino, Slack, Sweezy, and Freeland. At this time, I'll ask that you silence any mobile devices and we can get started with our meeting. Our first item of business is to approve the actions from the October 2nd meeting. May I have a motion to approve those actions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? And that motion carries. Next, we will organize the agenda. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. We'll determine which items we will discuss today, which will be considered on consent, and if any are continued to another meeting or withdrawn, we'll consider those as well. So, starting at the top of the agenda, Item 1 is a vacation in the vicinity of Chicago Avenue. That application has been withdrawn. Moving along, Item 2 is also a vacation. That's in the vicinity of 23rd Avenue North. We will discuss Item 2 if anyone is here for that. Item 3 is another vacation. That's in the vicinity of Humboldt Avenue North. We will continue that item to the October 30th meeting. So, if anyone is here for that, that will be considered on October 30th. Item 4 is at 2527 Gerard Avenue North. That's an application for a change of nonconforming use. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 4? Seeing no one, we'll put Item 4 on consent. Item 5 is the Cedar Lake South Beach Improvement at 3500 Cedar Lake Avenue. That is a conditional use permit and a variance as well as a vacation. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation for Item 5? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item 6 is at 1120 West Broadway. That's a rezoning. We'll continue that item to October 30th. So, if anyone is here for Item 6, that will be considered on October 30th. Item 7 is at 4816 Niclet Avenue. That is a change of nonconforming use. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 7? We can, we can, we'll still pull it from consent and we'll give you an opportunity to speak on that, so. All right, so Item 7, we will discuss. Item 8 is the Brea Missionary Baptist Church at 704 through 714 30th Avenue North. Two applications, a rezoning and site plan review related to a building addition. There is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 8? Seeing no one, we'll put Item 8 on consent. Item 9 is 8 on 44th at 2614 and 1/2, 2616, 2616 and 1/2, and 2620 West 44th Street. Several applications for a new development there, and we'll discuss Item 9. I assume many of you are here for that item. Can I just see a show of hands so I have a sense of how many people might want to speak on that? So, several of you will discuss Item 9. Item 10 is a zoning code text amendment, and that is related to land use application fees. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 10? Seeing no one, we'll put Item 10 on consent. Finally, Item 11, also a zoning code text amendment that relates to parking garages. We'll discuss Item 11. So, if anyone is here for that, we will discuss it. So, our agenda as amended is as follows. Items 4, 5, 8, and 10 will be on consent. We'll discuss Items 2, 7, 9, and 11. Items 3 and 6 will be continued to the October 30th meeting, and Item 1 has been withdrawn. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? And that motion carries. Next, we will consider our Committee of the Whole consent agenda, and Vice President Slack, do you have an update?
Thank you, President Brown. At the October 5th, 2017 Committee of the Whole, we heard one item. It was a series of land acquisitions at 938, 942, 946, 952, 954, 958, 964, and 966 Lowery Avenue Northeast, and the recommended motion was to approve the staff report that the item was consistent with the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth.
All right, I'll take that as a motion to find those acquisitions consistent with the comprehensive plan. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? And that motion carries. Next, may I have a motion to continue Items 3 and 6 to the October 30th meeting? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? That motion carries. Next, may I have a motion to accept the withdrawal of Item 1? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of our meeting, and at this time, I will open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. Again, that's Items 4, 5, 8, and 10. Is anyone here to speak on any of those items? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and Commissioners may have a motion to approve. Yes? Yes, so, so we're holding the public hearing for Items 4, 5, 8, and 10, which are the items that no one raised their hand for. So, we'll, we'll discuss Items 2, 7, 9, and 11. So, again, Items 4, 5, 8, and 10. If there is no one, yes? Oh, you wanted to discuss Item 4? Okay, you're, you're, you didn't necessarily want to speak. So, if Item 4 is considered on consent, it will simply be, the staff recommendation will simply be approved. So, if no one's here to speak on it or has any concerns, we don't need to discuss it. So, anyone for any of those items? If there is no one, I'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our items for discussion. We'll start with Item 2, and Staff, it's Ms. Smith.
Good evening, Commissioners. The applicant is requesting a vacation of 23rd Avenue North, the section between First Street North and Second Street North. The applicant is North Second Street Steel Supply, and they're located directly to the south of 23rd Avenue North, and their site is currently used to store and distribute a variety of steel products, including carbon steel, stainless steel, galvanized steel, and aluminum. They are requesting that this area be vacated so that they can use it as a private road and continue to use it as for truck parking, waiting, staging, loading, and unloading of material. They've stated that this portion of the right-of-way is not currently used by through traffic because there are railroad tracks directly to the east of the site along First Street North. They've also said that the road is in poor condition and that they would privately maintain it if it were vacated. Here is a view, an aerial shot of this, this portion of the right-of-way. And this is in a different direction, and you can see that the Mississippi River is very close in proximity. Going back to this, the, the, this portion of the street grid is heavily talked about in the Above the Falls Plan. It's referenced as a connector to the river, although staff does acknowledge that this exact portion of 23rd Avenue North would not, is not expected to connect in any future plans because of the development to the east of First Street North, which is Life Source. However, staff, both Public Works and the Community Planning Economic Development have concerns and are recommending denial of this right-of-way vacation request because First Street North may be, may be recommissioned in the future. So, currently, it contains the BNSF railway, but it is city-owned property, so it could be, it could be turned into an active street area in the future now that the Upper Harbor Terminal has been decommissioned and is, is, is less active at this point. Public Works has also stated that they have existing water mains, sanitary sewers, and stormwater connections in this right-of-way, so they would also like to preserve this, this area for utility purposes as well as for transportation purposes in the future. That's about all I have for the staff presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing on this item, and I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. Rudy Rosen, 2212 North Second Street in Minneapolis. Now, if I have a couple of illustrations, can I put them up?
Yeah, you can put them on that overhead.
So, we are requesting to vacate 23rd Avenue North for two reasons. First, it's important to the continued operation of our business, which has operated in the city of Minneapolis for 33 years now. We continue to maintain and operate the street as a private roadway for use in staging, loading, and unloading of vehicles. Secondly, we would undertake the maintenance and plowing of that roadway. 23rd Avenue North is currently in poor condition and rarely plowed during the winter. For many years now, we have, we have plowed that road ourselves and continued to patch it as needed. We've reached out to the city several times, both for plowing and patching, and it's still, in our opinion, maintained in poor condition, which is part of the reason, part of the bargain, I guess. We've reviewed staff's report for the Above the Fall and the Above the Falls Master Plan in detail, and would like to make the following notes. The staff report provides two central reasons for recommending the denial of our request. First, the Department of Public Works recommends denial of this right-of-way vacation in order to preserve the street right-of-way grid for future transportation purposes and for existing and future utility purposes. Second, CPED staff finds that the section of public right-of-way is close to the river, and it has been identified as part of the street grid and transportation network that has connections to the Mississippi River in the Above the Falls Master Plan updated 2013. Additionally, CPED makes note that the BNSF railway spur line could, at some point in the future, be decommissioned, creating a future connection to First Street North for through traffic. It is our belief that the road has no future use as a connecting road to the river or anywhere else due to the existence of both natural and man-made barriers to both the east and the west. I have two separate aerials here.
Did everybody see that?
As you can see, I've noted the area to be vacated along 23rd Street. Two blocks to the west is, or one block to the west, is Interstate 94, which creates a, obviously, man-made barrier to extending 23rd any further to the west without a very costly project. If you look to the east, there is an active railroad track immediately east of that property, and to the east of that, there is a newly constructed in the past few years, Life Source Building, which, the footprint of which sits exactly in the extension path of 23rd. So, this extension, this portion of 23rd, in our opinion, has limited connectivity now and in the future. If you look at this aerial, you can also see the Mississippi River to the east, again, a large barrier to any expansion further to the east of 23rd. The staff report also mentions First Street North, which is a city right-of-way. Here is a picture of the existing condition of First Street North. It's a little difficult to see, but it is a dirt pathway, which is very narrow, with a fence of our property line on the right side of that picture, and active railroad tracks to the left side of that picture. As, in its current state, I believe it is too narrow to be a true roadway, and so it would require the vacation or the railroad giving up its right to that railroad tracks to be used for any through fare in the future. First Street, as I understand it, only extends approximately one block to the north and one block to the south, so even then, if the railroad tracks ever were vacated, we do believe that there's limited connectivity from 23rd to First to any other major arterials. We'd also like to note that the Above the Falls Master Plan does not include any future expansion of 23rd Street North. It does show it as a road, which is how we continue, would continue to operate it, albeit a private road. Additionally, our property is in that plan noted for industrial use, both currently and in the future, which is consistent with our current use. The plan does also show several pedestrian and bike paths through the corridor. One of these, which already exists, is along North Second Street. We believe that this approval of this request would take heavy truck traffic off of North Second Street and away from bike and pedestrian traffic, which would be in the interest of public safety. As a final note, we have told both Planning and Public Works that we are amenable to any necessary easements for maintenance of any public utilities or private utilities that currently exist along or underneath 23rd Avenue North. We feel granting of these easements should allay any concerns of utility access or maintenance going forward. For, as long as I discuss, mention maintenance, here are a couple pictures of the current state of 23rd Avenue. As you can see, there's pooling of water due to potholes and cracking throughout the road. There are a couple of steel plates over the road where there's large potholes. I would say that these two pictures, taken in two separate areas, are consistent with the condition of the road as a whole, and, as I mentioned, we don't feel that it has been adequately or properly maintained, which is something we would do as part of this request. Summarize, it's our opinion that this request would be a win-win proposition. We would continue to operate it as a roadway for use in operating our business, which we've happily operated in the city of Minneapolis for the past 33 years. We'd also provide any necessary utility easements to provide for any existing utility lines along 23rd. Our proposed use now and in the future, we believe, is consistent with the Above the Falls Master Plan, and the vacation of 23rd would allow us to continue operating as an employer in the city of Minneapolis for years to come. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can move on. Are there any other speakers on this item? Is there anyone? Yes, you can come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
I wasn't really prepared to speak because I sent an email a few days ago, and I thought that they would read the email. But, we are the owners of the property on that block, 2206 and 2208 North Second Street, so we are on the corner of 22nd and Second, and we own the first property, which is a vacant lot and the building next to it, which weren't really shown very well on those diagrams. But, we are the only other property on the block besides North Second Street Steel. Currently, North Second Street Steel is leasing our property and has been for many years, I believe since 2004. So, he can use our property and the alley behind it as he, as he wishes, but they have indicated they may not renew their lease with us when this lease expires, and our concern is that if we have a new tenant, they may need to use the alley behind our building and behind their property to go out through 23rd. You know, go in 22nd, out 23rd. Tenants prior to them, you know, used that, and this alley was vacated to not allow public traffic many years ago, and I, I can't tell you exactly what year, but it was way before Larry Rosen started leasing from us. And it allowed shared use by the surrounding property owners. At that time, that was the property owned by us, the Jacobson family, Midwest Industrial, owned by George, George Haben, and North Second Street Steel, owned by Larry Rosen. It was agreed that all parties could use the vacated alley. In May of 2005, when North Second Street Steel was applying to build his first addition behind 2212 North Second, which is his office, the city asked for, and we, both Midwest and ourselves, had to give North Second Street Steel a written letter of approval to use the alley for, for trucks and forklifts. We still have no objection to this, but we do not want to give up our rights to also use the vacated alley behind our properties if needed. If a potential tenant did not have use of the alley, entering on 22nd, exiting on 23rd, this would possibly hurt or hinder our chances of signing a new tenant, and it may also decrease the overall value of our property. Please consider our ability to use this section of 23rd Avenue connected to the alley, especially if we no longer have North Second Street Steel leasing our property. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I should have you mention your name as well.
Pardon? My name is Ruth Gregory.
Okay, thank you.
And my brother Doug Jacobson is also here, and the company that we have is Jacobson and Gregory LLC, and that is who their leases with.
All right, thank you. And we did receive your email, incidentally. We did receive your email.
Oh, you did?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
All right. Are there any other speakers on this item? Anyone else like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, are there any further questions of staff? Commissioner Freeland?
Yes, can I ask staff about the Above the Falls Master Plan?
This is one of the exhibits from the plan.
So, I've been working on the Above the Falls Master Plan for 20 years now, and the, the right-of-way is a really important piece of the future of actually getting people to and from the Upper Harbor Terminal. So, to say that it won't happen is something that I believe is untrue. And again, the, the way to get the trail through is in that current railroad corridor, and I just wanted to point that out.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any further questions, or would someone like to start things off with a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the staff recommendation to deny.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve staff recommendation, which is to deny the vacation. Commissioner Magrino?
Um, I just wanted to also add, it may not seem super intuitive right now, given the uses that are in the area, to, to keep this public right-of-way, but I think there's a whole lot of examples, about 15 or so blocks south of here in the north loop, where we have a pretty disjointed street grid, and I don't think people would have imagined 40 or 50 years ago that now would be a problem that we are missing those spaces, or those public, public right-of-way there. And so, I think that's just something to keep in mind, that we're supposed to be thinking kind of about the long-term impact of giving up public land here.
I have a question for staff. Has there been any discussion between the applicant and Public Works for, you know, some sort of maintenance agreement or lease arrangement, something that, you know, would allow the, the street right-of-way to remain in place but may give the applicant an opportunity to maintain it? I realize they have been doing some maintenance, but to kind of acknowledge that existing arrangement, is, is that a possibility?
I'm not aware of any agreements to that effect, so I know that, of course, they've, easements would be required if the vacation were approved, but I don't believe that Public Works has discussed additional maintenance on that site that is currently being used by the applicant.
And is there any plan to reconstruct that street at any point?
Not that I am aware of, but there are plans for the storm sewer to go in, in that site, in that portion of the right-of-way.
I would assume when that occurs, the pavement would be replaced largely as well. Okay, is there any further discussion? We do have a motion and a second on this. Yep, there is none. Okay. I'll, I'll just add, I, I do believe, I mean, I can certainly empathize with the applicant that right now, the, the maintenance of that street is, is not great, and the existing arrangement maybe isn't ideal. Hopefully, there is an opportunity for them to continue to work with the city on kind of who does what in terms of, of maintenance. I, I do have some concerns about completely vacating that right-of-way, not only because there are utilities through there, but just in, in the very long term, it could be a lot of years before, you know, there's enough infrastructure improvement, development activity in that area that, that right-of-way becomes necessary, but I think it's important for the city to, to preserve that opportunity so that that can occur. So, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Gignan?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Freeland?
Aye.
Six zero.
All right, that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on Item 2. Our next item for discussion is Item 7, 4816 Niclet Avenue. Staff, it's Ms. Wallace, and I believe we just have one speaker, so perhaps you could give us a very brief presentation on this.
Good evening, Commissioners. The application before you is a change of nonconforming use at 4816 Niclet Avenue. The site is currently occupied by a building that does resemble a single-family home but has never operated as such. It was created in the 1950s as a YMCA and is split up into offices in the main area. It also does not include a kitchen. The existing area, or much of the surrounding area is R1A, although the site is just one parcel south of the Activity Center at 48th and Niclet. Here's the site. This is a photo of the building, and then, as you can see in this photo, it really is very close to the adjacent commercial areas, just slightly to the north. The applicant has proposed to add a, an art studio in addition to offices for her jewelry business. The studio would be confined to a small section of the building, and the applicant would use the rest of the space for offices for her own use and to rent out small offices of 660 and 900 square feet to other low-intensity office uses. Staff has evaluated the required findings for a change of nonconforming use and finds that the proposal to add a jewelry studio in addition to offices would not be more intense than the previous nonconforming use as offices, and staff is recommending approval.
All right, Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing on this item. I don't know if the applicant is here, if there's anything you would, is there anything you'd like to add to staff's presentation? If, all right, and please state your name and address for the record.
I am Deirdre Olson, and, Deirdre Olson Gentilezzo, goodness, don't know my own name in front of all you guys. I have been operating my jewelry business in the city of Minneapolis for 25 years in various sundry locations, excited to move into a space with more space. We have never had issue in any of our locations with the amount of use. We are, what I would call, a very gentle use, and feel that Niclet Avenue would be an excellent place for our company to be housed and be in, can just be appropriate for the city's plan for Niclet Avenue.
Right, thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can move on to other speakers, and I believe we just had one other speaker, and please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Wanda Ackerman, and I live at 10 Rustic Lodge West, which is right next door, that I think of the building as 4 Rustic Lodge because it faces Rustic Lodge, and that was one of my questions. I don't think it's even, maybe this isn't even the proper place to ask it, but I will. Why is it now on 4816 Niclet when it faces Rustic Lodge? Why was the address changed?
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity.
I can ask that of staff. I don't know if there's anything else you, or do you have any other questions or comments?
Oh, that, that was one, and the other was kind of part of that. The entrance, will that be on Rustic Lodge or will it be on Niclet? What looks like the proper entrance is on Rustic Lodge. There's a little side door on Niclet, and I was just curious which one is going to be, or both are going to be used.
Okay, yeah, I can ask Ms. Wallace to come back up and-
Okay, and that is that another one of our neighbors, Pearl Johnson, is at 4812 Niclet, and that's really her question. She's, she's elderly, meaning she's older than me, and that she couldn't make it. So, I said, I will go, I'll ask that question, and I'm sure everybody's aware that it's a little one-way street, so parking's always an issue. I park in the driveway. I'm right next to you, so there's a couple spaces there, but it is, it is crowded. I'm guessing that there won't, will there be about 10 new cars, probably? Probably not that many. So I guess I wanted to say welcome. And I hope, I mean, it's a lovely little street, close to other shops and stuff. And I know that Mary Lou Pease of 15 Rustic Lodge, she had sent a little email to you. And what she says in there, I think, represents how the neighbors on that block feel they would love to have somebody in what we still call the Y, and to have a nice, stable, long-term resident. So I guess what I'm saying is welcome, move in soon.
All right, thank you. I might just ask staff to clarify, any idea why the address is on Nicollet? And maybe you could clarify the location of the entrance as well.
I am not sure why the address is on Nicollet. It did come through a few years ago for a change of nonconforming use, and the address at that time was also 4816 Nicollet, so I'm not sure. And then, as you can see from this photo, this is oriented towards Rustic Lodge. So there is, the main entrance is off of Rustic Lodge, although the applicant has proposed some additional landscaping and a new pathway off of Nicollet to access the front entry, along with some additional landscaping and screening.
All right, sounds good. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we just have the one application before us, the change of nonconforming use. Would someone like to start things off with a motion?
I would move that we approve the application for change of nonconforming use.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the change of nonconforming use. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Gegnan?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Six zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item seven. Our next item for business is item nine, eight on 44th. And staff is Ms. Smith.
The project before you is four parcels centered on 2620 West 44th Street in Linden Hills. The site is zone R4, and it's also located in the Shoreland Overlay District. The surrounding area includes the neighborhood commercial node, just one block to the west at Sheridan and up, and, I'm sorry, 43rd and Sheridan. And within that node, there are commercial zoning districts such as C1 and C2. And the general area also contains a range of residential densities, including R1, R1A, R2, R2B, and then up to OR3 as well. Lake Harriet is 380 feet to the east approximately. Here is an aerial of the site. As you can see, there's a variation of building heights and uses. The site is also adjacent to a curvilinear alley just to the north, and the site does contain three existing detached garages right now. The site also contains this existing single-family home that would be preserved as part of the development. The proposal includes four applications. There's also a fifth, there's also a fifth application for the variance for Shoreland that's mentioned in the staff report, but we're returning that application. It's not necessary. So the applications before you today are two conditional use permits. One is for a cluster development, and then the other one is a conditional use permit to increase the maximum height of a cluster, or for a building in the Shoreland Overlay District where the maximum height is two and a half stories or 35 feet. The proposal by the applicant is four stories or 53 feet 10 inches. And then, site plan review is required for the cluster development, and finally, a preliminary and final plat. So as you can see, there are two principal buildings proposed on the site. There's the existing single-family home and also the four-story building. The applicant is also proposing a 10-stall surface parking area in addition to their 11 underground stalls. Here is the building from the front and from the back. So in the back, there would be a garage door that provides access to the lower-level parking area. Here is a side view of the building. The proposed exterior materials are hand-laid brick and glass. Those are the two materials. And then there's also ipe wood decking. So here is a cross-section that the applicant has provided, showing you the view from 44th Street, and also the lower-level parking from the side. The lower-level parking area would also contain a residential lobby that faces 44th Street, so that would provide some active uses on that frontage. Each level above that has two dwelling units proposed. So the conditional use permit for a cluster development, staff is recommending approval of this. And I just wanted to go over what is a cluster development. So it's defined in the zoning code as a unified development of three or more dwelling units, either attached or detached, in which one or more buildings are grouped together to preserve common space for the residents. And this type of development allows for flexibility in the location of residential structures, and also the size of individual lots in order to encourage a variety of housing types and efficient use of land. The applicant is proposing a significant amount of open space, so about a quarter of the overall land area would be dedicated to buildings. This is their common space plan that they've provided, showing that the green areas would be the common space, and also the surface parking is able to be included in that open space area. It shows that there are 21 parking spaces for the site, both enclosed and surface parking. Staff finds that this is reasonable for addressing traffic mitigation measures, also in combination with the bicycle parking that's recommended, and the proximity to the Route 6 bus. The comprehensive plan does encourage medium-density housing adjacent to neighborhood commercial nodes, and also flexible zoning code tools that promote high-quality development. So staff finds that this would be consistent with those policies. In addition, the Linden Hills Small Area Plan applies to the site. In that plan, the site is guided for medium-density residential development, which is 20 to 50 dwelling units per acre, and the proposed development would be a density of 14 dwelling units per acre. Staff does have some concerns about whether this development meets the true intent of a cluster development, which is encouraging grouping buildings together and preserving open space as much as possible. The proposed development would include one existing single-family home and then a multiple-family home, so we just would like to point that out. Secondly, the conditional, there's a conditional use permit to increase the maximum height, as I mentioned. The maximum height for both a cluster development and for a building in the Shoreland Overlay District is two and a half stories. So the one application can cover both of those. The proposed building height is four stories or 53 feet 10 inches, as measured from 10 feet out from the adjacent natural grade. I also wanted to cover how we define a story in the zoning code. So the applicant has provided the image that you see. Here, this is not actually the length of one building wall, this is all of the building walls combined into one. And it shows you how much of the building is above grade versus below grade. And based on, based on the plans that have been submitted by the applicant, staff has determined that that lower level, that includes the parking area and the residential lobby, is not considered a full story, because less than 50% of the total perimeter is more than six feet above grade, and no point is, no one point is more than 12 feet above grade at any point. So I just wanted to cover that. And then, just to go over what the Shoreland District purpose is, reading from the zoning code, it's established to preserve and enhance the environmental qualities of surface waters and the natural and economic values of shoreline areas within the city, to provide efficient, beautiful utilization of those waters and shoreline areas, and to comply with the requirements of state law. Here is a map of the city's Shoreland Overlay District in the darker blue color. So Shoreland, this Shoreland Overlay District applies to any area within 1,000 feet of a protected lake and 300 feet within, within 300 feet of a protected river. Here is where the shoreline applies, within the area of the subject site, and the subject site is, of course, highlighted in the yellow. So staff finds that the conditional use permit for height is supportable. Staff is recommending a lower overall height of three stories or, I'm sorry, three stories, which is 11 feet shorter than the four stories, 53 feet 10 inches that's been proposed by the applicant. Staff finds that the additional height would not prove detrimental to the public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare, and it would not be injurious to other property in the vicinity. There are varying building heights and densities and uses in the area. And in addition, this area has a lot of variation in the natural grade, which results in the proposed building being relatively shorter than some of the other multiple-family buildings that are within a block of the site, as measured above sea level. And then, the actual shoreline area would not be compromised. But staff, as I mentioned, does have concerns about the overall height of the building when, when looking at the building in combination with the overall length of the building, which is 151 feet long. So we're recommending that the overall height be lowered by 11 feet. In addition, I'd like to point out, the building itself, from the street view, is 51 feet wide, and it's on a 105-feet lot, which could help it read as a narrower building, and also helps with minimizing some of the shadowing effects on other property in the area. It would be a significant distance from other single-family homes, so it'd be 28 feet from the single-family home to the west, and 140 feet from the property to the east. And there's a multiple-family home directly across the alley to the north, and it would be 65 feet at its closest point from that property. And staff also notes that the subject site is separated from Lake Harriet, which is the protected water, by mature trees, existing homes, the public street, and a parkway. So it would have pretty limited visibility from the parkway itself. This is from the parkway right now. Here's an exhibit provided by the applicant, showing how the proposed building would fit in at four stories within all of the other buildings that are already existing in the area. Here's another view looking south. And here's a cross-section of 44th Street. So you can see the proposed building right here, further to the right on the picture, is lower in terms of above sea level grade than some of the structures further to the west on the same block. Site plan review, most of the condition, most of the conditions that staff is recommending have to do with screening the surface parking area and adding some trees, just to make sure that the site is in full compliance with the site plan review standards. Staff recommends approval of the cluster development with the condition that it comply with all of the applicable regulations governing stormwater. So this site is less than, is less than one acre, and is not, and they're not required to implement full stormwater mitigation, but they've, the applicant has submitted a plan and also an analysis that's found in your staff reports. It shows that the plans have been revised to fully comply with the stormwater mitigation practices, as if it were actually a full acre. Staff recommends approving the conditional use permit to a lower height, as I mentioned, three stories or 42 feet 10 inches. We're also recommending that four bicycle parking spaces be provided. I wanted to make note of one thing that was a, an oversight in the staff report. So the action that is listed on your agenda shows that site, that we're recommending four stories for the site plan review, but that should be revised to reflect the recommendation for the conditional use permit for three stories, 42 feet. And then, also, we are not recommend, I just wanted to ensure that we are not recommending approval for alternative compliance of the window requirement. We're recommending that they be expected to fully comply, but that was not listed as a specific condition. It was just mentioned in alternative compliance. So if the planning commission wishes to approve the site plan review, staff would recommend adding in that condition that no fewer than four square feet of additional window area be added to the lower level facing 44th Street. And with that, I, oh, I should mention, there have been a number of comments submitted tonight. As you can see, the Linden Hills Neighborhood Council's Zoning and Housing Committee has voted to oppose the project on the basis of the conditional use permit for height request. And the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District has submitted a letter expressing their concerns with stormwater mitigation. And then, the applicant has responded in return with their stormwater mitigation plan. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions of Commissioners? Commissioner Kronzer?
Vreeland, could you go over some more specifics about what the applicant is proposing for stormwater management, in terms of rate, volume, and water quality?
So, and the applicant is, I'm sure, much better versed in the specifics of that. So, so I guess which?
What I understand, looking at this really quickly, is there's a, there's an underground stormwater system that's collecting stormwater, controlling the rate of it. I just, I think it's helpful to understand exactly what's being proposed.
Sure. So yes, I would agree with you, there is an infiltration basin that's being sited on the utility plan. I can put this up, but I might ask the applicant to speak to this issue, because I would not. Would you?
I have a few more, we can let the applicant ask.
Okay.
That's fine. Can you talk about how floor-area ratio works within a cluster development?
Yes.
If it applies, and just kind of refresh your memory on that.
Yes, so the subject site is still located in the R4 zoning district and is subject to all of the floor-area ratio requirements. So the proposed floor-area ratio is 1.0, where they're allowed 1.5. And so we're looking at the overall site. The overall site area is 27,195 square feet. The proposed gross floor area, which is all of the buildings, so all, so all of the existing building gross floor area, and all of the proposed building gross floor area, we're including a portion of the lower level within the gross floor area calculation. So any of the accessory parking is not included, but the lower-level, like residential lobby areas, that would be included in that overall bulk calculation.
Can you repeat those numbers again? What's permitted and what's proposed?
So the permitted floor-area ratio is 1.5, and the site has, the proposed development is 1.0 as proposed.
Okay, thank you. And then, in the Stafford part, part of the recommendation is to shrink the size of the stairs and patio to make it allowable. Could you walk us through that? How much smaller, what particular items you're suggesting?
Oh, sure. So this, there's a, there's a walkway leading from the public sidewalk to the residential lobby with the, with the door facing 44th Street. And we're just recommending that the walkway and then that, that entry area be reduced to meet the definition of a permitted obstruction. Right now, the size within the required yard is exceeding what would be allowed with 50 square feet. So they would have to shrink that, and the applicant is amenable to that condition of approval.
Okay, so it's the, it's the walk from the public sidewalk to the entry into that parking level, and that stoop out there?
Yes, yep.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay. That's it.
Any further questions of staff? Commissioner Slack?
Yeah, Vreeland, in the site plan review section, let's see, item 13 talks about additional landscaping that's required to meet the code. How does staff balance sort of tree loss with landscape requirements? Because it just appears that, at least on the removal plan, there's a lot of mature trees that are being removed as part of the plan. Not sure exactly how the code actually applies to landscaping, additional landscaping that needs to be added. It just says, you know, there's certain plants that need to be added. What's the, what's the balance there? I don't know if you understand the question, but.
Yeah, I can try. So. So we wouldn't regulate, you know, how much they can remove on the existing site, but they are certainly welcome to keep trees because those would count towards their minimum tree and shrub requirement. So we're always encouraging that whenever possible, but it's not part of our overall site plan review analysis to say, well, they've preserved this many trees. That's not part of the equation. I'm not sure if that completely answers. But, you know, Public Works does have a role in it, especially the park board is going to have input into whether they can remove and add certain species of trees in the public right of way.
No, that does. You know, I think the point I'm trying to get to is we're increasing impervious area of the site with the building and parking and driveway. And so I appreciate the fact that the applicant's gone the extra step to try to mitigate that with stormwater management practices, but trees, especially mature trees, also play a role in that. And so by increasing impervious surface and taking down big trees, you know, I think we're just creating a much bigger impact than what we can sort of even measure on a site like this. So I just wanted to see sort of where we were from the standpoint of what additional landscaping had to be added, because I do think that the project would benefit from more over-story trees.
All right. Are there any further questions of staff? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. So if you are in the audience, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for record.
And then I can answer here. Okay, perfect. Hi, I'm Julie Snow from Snow Crylich Architects. And let's see, I'm a resident across the lake, Harriet. And I'm here representing Snow Crylich Architects, a couple of my colleagues here, and the developers. And following me will be Carol Lansing, who will follow up with some more technical information. So what I'd like to do is simply introduce the project and have Carol then step up. I have to admit that Commissioner Cron's question is beyond my knowledge of the project and what I'm prepared to address, so apologies there. And the other piece that I really want to address is how delighted I am to be working on this project and to be working with developers, John and Andrew, that are so willing to build a very, very high-quality project, and they're bringing their vision to life, is really some of the most fun projects that we do in our office. And we do a lot of really fun projects. So let me dive in. I think really staff has done such a great job of describing the project. I'll only add a few more notes to what she's done. This is more or less a summary of the project. We wanted to show a combination of the two units per floor shown on the site and the sort of density that's created, but also to look at how much open space is retained on the site. And to me, one of the most important pieces of this is that sort of beautiful green space that happens behind the Craftsman bungalow that sits at the front of the site. I think saving the Craftsman bungalow, it's almost, at least for me, when I come around the lake, that's this little gem, this little iconic building. And to save it, I think, really is a testament to the interest of this developer in doing a project that's really the best for the neighborhood. In addition, we've got the four-story condo building, which you're seeing laid out in white here. So that would give us a total of nine units on the site, eight units plus the Craftsman. So this is an image. We're, again, narrowing the sidewalk into the building according to the review that we've had. We're retaining as many of the trees as possible on the site, other than ones that are located under the footprint of the building, and would like to replace many of the less desirable trees with more desirable trees and create a good amount of screening and presence of greenness around the building in keeping with the neighborhood. So this shows the front of the building, a little bit of the screening that we'll use to make the entry private and to make some of the terraces between the two buildings private, and also the trees that we intend to keep on the site. I would say, I'm going to go back once to this, that if you see this sort of boulder outline, that's about a 30-foot-wide facade that's along 44th. And what's sort of grayed out is much further back. So although the building is 50 feet wide in the back, it's only 30 feet wide at 44th Street. And so I think that really makes the presence of the building work very well from the neighborhood. This is the, let's see, east-facing facade that addresses the bungalow, and then this is the west-facing facade with two of the trees that we would intend to retain, and we would be planting additional beyond them. And then this is the back of the building, where you're seeing the little garage entrance. So this is the slide that was also shown in staff report. And our interest here is really comparing how far back we are from the street and the relative heights of various buildings in the neighborhood. And so you can see at the top of the hill, you're seeing buildings that are at 963 and 946. And then from this side, you're seeing ours at 927 in the red. And then further up, 934, I think, is the tallest. And so really, in terms of relative building elevations, we don't feel like we're out of place. We also were very interested in looking at shadow, what kind of shadows we would cast on the site in the adjoining buildings. And so this just analyzes basically our June and December shadows that would be cast. And then a similar image to the staff image where you're looking up 44th Street from the bike path and walking path around Harriet. And then one further out on the water, where I also worry about kayaks and stuff, being able to see a nice green shoreline. Basically, the size of the trees that are to the west of us pretty much conceal the project upgrowth that would be in the spring and summer. So this is another little analysis that we did, was we basically took the setback and looked at the allowed FAR and tried to kind of imagine what it would be like if maybe a more aggressive developer controlled this site. And so in this case, you would have a full-site coverage of 35 feet, and it would end up being a pretty impressive presence on 44th Street, which I think would be far more detrimental than the 30-foot-wide facade that we have next to the little Craftsman bungalow. This was almost painful for me to show because it's just not a nice way to go. Here's, again, a slide showing our building materials. And what I think is impressive is the ability of masonry. We're using wood windows on the inside and aluminum on the outside. And the sort of residential high quality, this is a concrete building, so it's a concrete frame. It's not the typical, you know, stick-on concrete, so it has a much, much higher quality building volume. And I think that's a huge asset to the neighborhood and to the city. So high-quality construction materials, lower FAR, 8,000 square feet of landscape common space, and the retention of the Craftsman house being, I think, the key points. So Carol will come up and talk some more about important stuff. Thank you for your attention. I'm going to go sit over there and then answer questions.
All right. Maybe we could just see if anyone has a question at the moment. Are there any questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can move on to Carol. We'll move on to some other speakers once we have the full presentation from that applicant. We'll take those when we move on to other speakers.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Carol Lansing. I'm an attorney at Bagory Baker Daniels, working with the development team. With respect to the stormwater management, we don't have the civil engineers here to give you professional details, but they did respond to the letter from the watershed district that said, in fact, we do meet the requirements that you're putting in your letter, although I don't believe those are technically the requirements of the code. They are using stormwater infiltration on a site that's less than an acre. The only condition of approval that we are objecting to is the condition that the height of the building be reduced to three stories. The site zoning is R4, which allows four stories as a right, but there's two reasons why we need the CUP to increase height to four. One is because the site is in the shoreland overlay district, and the other is because it's an application for a cluster development, which also has a two-and-a-half-story height limit. Mei Ling identified the purpose of the shoreland regulations for you, and those are focused on preserving and enhancing environmental qualities of the waters and the natural and economic value of the shoreland areas. The city is required to have a shoreland overlay district by state statute, and there are state rules that provide guidance on what those regulations should be. But both the state guidance and the city's ordinance recognize that the conservative two-and-a-half-story starting point for height in a shoreland district, which applies statewide, is not always appropriate, and that you should be able to look at context. So context is what's important. And CUP process generally requires you to evaluate context. And first, I'd like to emphasize, this would not be the first multiple-family dwelling approved in a shoreland overlay district since the adoption of the ordinance that is not on a commercial corridor. There have been, Laguna is in a six-story building on Lagoon. That's not a corridor. Projects surrounding Loring Park, the lake at Loring Park has a shoreland overlay district, and projects have been approved that are taller than two-and-a-half stories there, some considerably. Mill and Main and other projects along the river have also been approved since this ordinance was adopted. So while a commercial corridor along Lake Street has been one context for proving height greater than two-and-a-half stories in the shoreland, there are others, and those include the underlying zoning, which in this case is R4, the height of existing development, and the impact on views from the lake and how a project blends in with that existing context. And as Julie told you, there are existing three- and four-story buildings right on Lake Harriet and an R4 district right on Lake Harriet. This is a block back. It's in a larger R4, R5, R6 district, and there are existing taller buildings and buildings of similar height there. The changing grade, the trees, all of this will screen the project from someone at the lake, and it will blend in. With respect to the cluster development, staff has indicated they have concerns about whether this meets the intent of a cluster. I think the original concept of a cluster is exemplified by what I know as Humboldt Circle, where it's a group of single-family dwellings, but they have smaller normal lots, and then they have a large open space. That's a classic concept, but it's not the only one, and this project does meet the intent, the specific development standards for clusters. I think that's an indication that it meets the intent of the cluster. And, you know, the purpose of doing a cluster here is that it allows us to have the lot area to provide some additional density, but preserve a single-family house that's in great condition. You know, and as Julie said, if you demolish the single-family house, you could do a single, multiple-family dwelling that didn't need to be a cluster, but wouldn't have all the same benefits. I think in the context of what's around here, that single-family house is going to look like it's part of the single-family neighborhood to the east, and the multiple-family dwelling is going to look like it's part of a multiple-family dwelling district, which it is because there's several of those in the area. And I think the fact that cluster developments are allowed in an R4 zoning district suggests that there's not just a single concept for cluster of single-family homes that falls within the intent of the ordinance. In addition to context, increases in height should be evaluated based on their impacts. And the staff report, and Mei Ling has indicated that there are no identified adverse impacts in terms of light and air, shadows, impact from the shoreland values. And as been noted, the floor area ratio here is actually less than what would be allowed, as are the number of dwelling units per acre. 22 dwelling units per acre would be allowed, and 14 are proposed. So based on appropriateness of context and lack of adverse impacts, we request that you approve the project as proposed at four stories.
All right, thank you. And Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can move on to some other speakers. And I know there are a number of you who'd like to speak tonight, so I won't cut anyone off, but I'll ask that you keep your remarks to about two or three minutes. If you start to go too long, I might ask you to wrap up. And also be mindful of not simply repeating things. Other speakers have said we have received all of the emails that have been sent and reviewed those prior to the meeting. So we can start over on this side of the room. If anyone would like to volunteer to speak first, you can come to the microphone. Yeah, go ahead and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Walter Pitt. I'm on the link board, and I'm the zoning and housing committee chair. I wanted to, and someone mentioned earlier that we opposed this project because it didn't meet the conditional use permit of limiting the visibility of the building from the lake, and also that it doesn't fit the shoreland overlay requirements. So I just wanted to say one thing about what Carol Lansing said, and I believe, someone could correct me here for sure if I'm wrong, but I believe she misstated the zoning for these properties, and it's an R4/shoreland overlay district. And the shoreland overlay district, when they're in conflict with the R4, it's the shoreland overlay district that governs. So if someone wants to correct me on that, feel free, but I believe that that is the zoning for the property. I just wanted to say that, sure, can we pull it up maybe? Of, across from the lake, right here, you see what it actually looks like from across the lake. This building right here is 907, a height from sea level. The proposed building is supposed to be 927 from sea level. The site, as you know, is taking the trees out between the building site and the lake. If you look at this building, these are two floors, so that 20 feet, this is an approximation. I drew a line here, but I'll put this here so you can kind of see what it will be approximately. So it'll be approximately 20 feet above sea level from the buildings in front. So this picture is taken from a bit of an angle from the other side of the lake, and this is the one residence in front, directly in front of the house, and there's another residence here. So these residents are approximately the same height. So the building at 59 feet from the sidewalk, which is actually what it is, proposed to be, would be approximately, you know, you'd be seeing 20 feet of it above those properties. So I just wanted to say a couple of things, and I won't take very long like I usually do. I expressed the liberty of visibility. Okay, the things is, so one thing that's troubling about this property, which is from the front picture, is it appears to me to be five stories. And the first floor is 11 feet 8 inches tall. They're calling that, it's partially a basement, basically, but it's not really a basement. It's a entry, it's the main entryway to the building for people, and they're saying they want more glass on it. So at 11 feet 8, each story that goes up is 11 feet, so it's also the largest story. So when you're on the sidewalk, it'll appear that it's a five-story building, and each floor will be consistent. So I wanted to let you know that. And that's actual. What CPET is proposing, was there 42 feet 10 inches, which is also from the sidewalk, is actually 48 feet. is actually 48 feet tall. So even if the building comes down a floor, it's going to be four stories, 48 feet. The zero point that they keep mentioning is five feet above the sidewalk. That's the existing grade, which was there before and is there now, but they're planning on removing that grade to have the building be at the level. There's actually a small, there's actually a single-family house on the other side of the, on the left side of the building from this photo here, which Mei Ling, I don't believe she mentioned that. That house is up for sale right now, and the person who's selling it is saying that these heights will also be available to them for their project. I also wanted to let you know real quickly that the East Calhoun Community Organization, their livability group, also sent a letter in opposing or supporting our opposition at Linden Hills against this property. So that, one thing I wanted to say about the cups for height, is in the end, this is really about benefit. It's like, whose benefit is this? We have a shoreline district overlay, and that's a public benefit. It's a state statute and a city ordinance, and so it's something that is given to the public, so when they're on the lake, they don't see buildings eclipsing the trees and going up. That's really the purpose of it, also to mitigate stormwater. While they've mitigating some of their stormwater issues, you're also putting a parking lot on the hill on the slope there. So we've been hearing all the time that we don't want parking in Minneapolis, we don't want parking in Minneapolis, but lo and behold, here we have a parking lot being put on the shore of Lake Harriet. This building will be the first building like this on Lake Harriet. And the other buildings that Carol Lansing mentioned, which may be in the context of this building, from my understanding is the context of the zoning, the buildings they keep mentioning are in the OR3 farther up on, towards the node. Then there's an R6, which comes down from the node. Then there's an R4. Even the buildings up the hill from this, there's a three-story building. So this is taking the envelope of the shoreline overlay district and actually raising it as goes towards the lake. So I hope that when you look at your materials, you actually look at the pictures really carefully, and that you actually try to understand the context of what is actually there. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And who would like to speak next? Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Constance Peppin, and my address is 4031 Zenith Avenue South. My first comment is just more or less a question to Ms. Smith, because she mentioned in her presentation that this area is covered by the Linden Hill Smaller Plan, and I don't know if that's really true. I don't think it really matters for this situation, but my understanding is that it was not, the 44th Street all the way down to Lake Harriet was not part of the project study area for the Linden Hill Smaller Plan. The second thing is, when I raised my hand when I was sitting in the back, is I'm really, really confused about the plan for the trees. Maybe I'm not seeing the most current proposal or application, but I saw a lot of Xs through the trees, through a lot of mature trees. I think over two dozen mature, non-ash trees were going to be taken down. And yet, the pictures show a lot of trees around the site. So I think that's really confusing, and I'm thinking that maybe some changes have been made in the intentions by the developer, that they're really going to retain more than three trees, and maybe they're going to plant more than eight. But that's not many. When you are taking, when you've got 30 trees, or I don't know, I don't know the exact number, but it's certainly at least two dozen, and you take down two dozen and plant one-third as many back, that's not my definition of green space. So I really don't feel they should be able to say, wow, look at all the green space. The pictures show lawn. You know, lawn does not really absorb stormwater very well. It's kind of known as green concrete, especially if it's going to be your conventional Kentucky bluegrass that we would really hope no one is planting anymore. But it's very confusing. I don't think that the green, you should feel good about the green space when they're taking down over two dozen healthy, mature trees that are providing shade, oxygen, habitat, beauty, and hopefully screening the building from the rest of the neighborhood. As I understand it, so many trees are going to come down, it's not really going to screen it. And I want to be sure and make a point that I put in my memo to you, or in my email to you. It's very troubling that the staff report uses buildings that were constructed before the shoreline overlay district was created here as examples to justify why it's okay to approve this application. The shoreline overlay districts were created to prevent the proliferation of buildings just like this one, so close to the lake. To cite buildings that existed before the shoreline overlay was adopted undermines and weakens the very protections afforded by the shoreline overlay, which should be anathema to any city official, including our city council member or department, that to get up here and say that, well, you know, the shoreline overlay doesn't really matter because there's so many other buildings that are pretty tall in this area. Well, my understanding is that's one of the reasons why the shoreline overlay wasn't acted, was there were so many already there. So to me, that is really convoluted and misleading, and all those other buildings, whether they're three stories or four stories, should not be used to justify a five-story building, which this really is. It's a five-story building. The picture shows it very clearly. People come in, they're going to take away the hill, which is in violation, as I understand it, of the shoreline overlay, because one of the statements in the shoreline overlay is that "The view of the developed slope from the protected water shall be consistent with the natural appearance of the slope." The slope is gone. As I understand it, they're going to just take away the hillside that is there and have the building be at the, more or less at the sidewalk level, which is why I think it will really be more like 59 feet, because the slope is gone, but they get to still measure it from the old point of the slope. So that's really confusing, too. I think the building is really, as proposed, closer to 59 feet than 53 or 54. And it's all very confusing, and I just want to make one final comment, and that is that this building does not blend in. With all due respect to this really bright and talented architect, this building doesn't fit in. It's being plopped in between two single-family homes on this residential street, across the street are other single-family homes. It, it, it's bigger, it's a five-story building, and it is going to be very visible from most directions, because most of the trees will be gone. It is going to affect access to light of surrounding properties. It has to. It'll be the tallest building on the block. It will shadow residential properties. It has to, because it's going to be taller than any other buildings on the block. The scale and character of surrounding uses, it doesn't match. I mean, it's a great-looking building. It doesn't belong on this block in the shoreline overlay. And so I really urge you to not allow, not approve the conditional use permits. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Yes, next speaker. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bennett Shields. I live at 4037 Washburn Avenue South. I have a question for the people that are proposing this. Approximately, how many trees do you plan to keep on the site if you're approved?
Yeah, I can ask that of the applicant. I don't know if there's anything else you had to add in your presentation.
I do. I wanted to start with that.
If, maybe you could ask all your questions and go over everything first.
Okay, well, whatever trees that they plan to keep, I used to be a landscape contractor. The, these projects where they end up trying to save the trees, usually they tell you they're going to do that, and they actually make some cursory attempts to do so, but what happens 10, 15 years after the project is done, it's known as construction damage. And the roots and this type of thing, especially on older trees, they just can't seem to bounce back, and you end up seeing them decline, you know, after a while, and it ends up being a real problem. So whatever trees that they plan to keep, I'm not saying that they're not making an attempt, but you generally see them just kind of wither away. Also, on these lands, on this drawing here, the landscape plan, I've seen this type of drawing all the time, and you'll excuse my expression, but it just kills me to see all these types, you always see these types of drawings, but when the job is done, as reference to landscaping, it never looks like that. The tree that's off to the left is a very mature tree, and it, I've never seen a project yet that ever ends up looking like the image that they're presenting. So I'm concerned about the trees, and there doesn't seem to be any clear message as to how many mature trees are there and how are going to come down, you know, and it's a priority. We do have some oak trees and stuff, but we've been decimated with Dutch elm disease and the ash yellows, and so I think that that's a concern.
All right. Thank you. I might ask the applicant to come up and just clarify, maybe talk through the landscape plan very quickly, and help us understand, and Commissioner Slack had a question about that, too.
I can address that.
What, if any, trees are being preserved and what trees are being added.
Well, we're taking out the trees that are in the footprint of the building, and a number of the trees that are there, there is our, well, can we zoom in? Anyway, so we're taking out a number of trees that are in the footprint of the building, but we're also going to be replacing trees with maybe more robust trees that are earlier in their life. So we're retaining six trees, and we're taking out a number that are like volunteer trees. The lot has not been well-maintained along the back, and so there's a lot of volunteer trees like hackberry or just not great trees, buckthorn, that kind of thing. So we're taking that out, and then we'll be putting in maybe more robust and more desirable trees.
All right. Thank you. Oh, well, okay, so we can just have one person at a time, so.
Am I done? I'm done.
So, okay, thank you. Yes, you can state your name and address for the record.
Lauren Mecha, 4334 West Lake Harriet Parkway. My property is immediately east of the development site. We are living on the alley, and I want you to know that I am in favor of development. I love what's happening in Linden Hills. It's vibrant. It feels urban, that we are in favor of development. However, this is not consistent with our property. It is going to dramatically affect how we live day to day. It's twofold. So as a sailor, as a kayaker, when I'm out on the lake, I can see my home. I can see my bedroom windows, and I'm going to show you this. If this building goes in as proposed, it's going to tower over my home and be visible from the lake. Let's see if I can get this. How do I zoom in on this?
There's a button on there that you can use to zoom.
There we go. Is that going to zoom in? Okay, so what we see here, this is the development that happened before the overlay plan was in place, and on an otherwise pristine lake, pristine, that's the side I do live on, the east side, is pristine over there. We have a hodgepodge of buildings, and this is my home right here, this bit of white popping out right there. These trees are all coming down. That's the view from my second-floor window. All of those trees are coming down. They are hackberries. They're beautiful. They do create screening. And in the absence of those trees, this new home, this new, I'm sorry, this new development is going to be readily visible from Lake Harriet. I know this as a sailor. I know this as a kayaker. I know this as somebody who walks the lake every day. So it's not consistent with the overlay project. Secondly, the way the project is designed now, there are floor-to-ceiling windows overlooking my backyard. We will be living in a fishbowl. It is too high. It is too open, and it's going to dramatically change the value of my home that we have invested in so greatly. You talk about the desire to screen. Nothing is going to screen a fifth story, because I do believe it is five stories high. Nothing is going to screen that view from the floor-to-ceiling windows coming into my backyard and going directly into my home. And so much of the talk has been about this view from 44th Street. I'm concerned about the view from the east side. I'm concerned about the view from my property and from, we're trying to, we're safeguarding these single-family homes on Lake Harriet. And from our property, the view is unacceptable.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, and please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Kelly Noble. My address is 4340 West Lake Harriet Parkway. I'm immediately next door to Lauren. My property is also directly on the east side of the alley, on the east facade of the proposed building. If you look at a couple of things, I'd appreciate if we could see, but I'll put this up just to give you a little bit of orientation. If it's possible, there we go. This is my garage, right here. Okay, so this is the property line, the alley, my garage, and then my house sits right here. So I'd like to just say a couple of things. First of all, there are many things that I actually really do like about this project. I really appreciate, actually, the fact that they've chosen to save the bungalow. It's a beautiful home. Made me sick to my stomach to think of that house being demolished. I think that's a waste, and so I was really glad to see that. My concerns are with the height of the project. I cannot support a building that would be that tall. Even the city's recommendation, while better than what the developers are proposing, it's still too tall for the overlay district, and it will be visible from the lake, which is exactly the purpose of why that statute was put in place. I'd like to show you another couple of pictures. This is from my back door, facing the proposed development site. Where you see air and sun and trees, you will see building, period. That will be gone. Where you see darkness, other than my garage door or my garage light, you will see building lights. There's no way around that. I understand that. There's going to be a building built here. My hope is that it will conform to the height restrictions that are in place. Is it possible, Mei Ling, to see the elevation that was shown? It was the east facade. So along with the really, really big issues of the height, the removal of the top-story trees, that's not quite the one I was wondering if, and maybe you guys can help, I'm not sure. It's the one that shows the landscaping. My other concern is around what happens in the alley. It was the architect's, yeah. It was, there we go. That's the one. Okay, so another big issue is, and I haven't seen this picture before, this isn't one that was on the website, but you see some greenery. This would be basically the view along my alley. The other thing that is of concern is with whether or not this along here, the plans, as I can read them, and I'd love to hear if this isn't the case, say that it is a segmented retaining wall with a fence. I'm not sure if that's the case. Nope, that's not what they're, that's, those are the accesses to the, to the, or the garages that are currently there. There's nothing there. So a concern that we have is there's only really, you know, at this point, I'd be the only one using that alley. If there is a wall built here, the navigability of this alley goes to basically in and out. I'm not sure how, at this point. I'm not sure how, at this point, garbage trucks don't even come down the alley, even as it is. I don't know how you plow it. So it's a major concern. And if, if what we're going to have is something more open, not a wall, not a fence, that'd be a lot better for everybody. It would feel a lot better and bigger and open. So in sum, I'd like to hope that the commission takes into account the fact that the developers purchased these properties, knowing that there was an overlay and that there were restrictions on the height, and that it does impact not only me as a private property owner, but all of us who use the lakes and enjoy the city. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Anyone else? Yes, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Okay. My name is Bill Carnes, and I live at 4344 West Lake Harriet Parkway. So I look out my back window directly at the bungalow in question. And I think a couple of the people that have gone before me have expressed many of my concerns. I think the building is way out of scale for my immediate neighborhood, which is, I live on West Lake Harriet Parkway, and that's all, I live in a five-unit condo building, which was originally built as a duplex. But the scale of that building, it could easily masquerade as a single-family house. So it's much smaller in scale. And all of the buildings along there are of that scale. The bungalow is of that scale. The house just to the west of the proposal is of that scale. I think there's a fourplex, which is just to the west of that, which is also roughly of that same scale. This proposal is not of that same scale. We have seen a lot of pictures of the neighborhood that illustrate the height above sea level of a lot of buildings that have been cherry-picked. Many of the buildings are the buildings that are on the very top of the hills in Linden Hills. And so they, of course, tall. What we didn't see on those diagrams was the heights of any of the buildings immediately adjacent to this proposal. We didn't see the height of any of those houses. This thing is way taller than any of the houses nearby. I would actually like to see what those elevations are. They have to be all at least 20 feet below this, in contrast to what you saw in the illustrations. I was reading through some of the material in the zoning review, in the preliminary development review, I saw the statement that the lower level is considered a full story per the definition of a story in Section 520.160. And it goes on to describe what that is. And so in that review, it says the lower level is a full story. So I guess my question is, what changed from that preliminary development review to what we are looking at today? Because now we're being told that isn't a full story. What I heard was that that bottom, that lowest level is 11 feet 8 inches, and to be considered a full story is, it needs to be 12 feet. Well, that's four inches difference. To me, four inches out of 12 feet is negligible. It's basically a story. Another thing that I'd just like to point out in the materials that were sent around, there were some quotes from the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth, some quotes from the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth. And in there, it says, "We are trying to conform to Land Use Policy 1.2, which is to ensure appropriate transitions between uses with different size, scale, and intensity." I don't believe that this is an appropriate, I don't think there is an appropriate transition, again, from the buildings that surround this proposal to what is being proposed. This is way out of scale to the immediate neighborhood. And finally, I'd just like to say that we heard during the initial presentation, a couple, well, somebody used the term "a more aggressive developer." And there was a comment about what we could do if we, on this, on this plot of land, if we built a building that conformed to the 35-foot height restriction that's mandated by the Shoreland Overlay District. And I guess what I'm hearing is the suggestion that the developers are asking for an exception to the zoning rules so that somebody else won't build something that does conform with the zoning rules. And to me, that seems like a perversion of what the zoning rules were intended to accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you. I might just ask staff to clarify where the building height is measured from and just clarify what had been communicated in the staff report.
Yep. So building height is measured in stories and in feet. So the overall height in feet has not changed since the PDR submittal. Staff's review for the PDR submittal is based on their preliminary plans, which did not include any grade analysis. So staff, at that time, believed that the lower level was a fifth story, but based on additional information that had been submitted, we determined that it is four stories.
All right. Thanks. Are there any other speakers on this item? Anyone else like to speak? If there is no one, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Vreeland.
Yes. I'd like to ask the chair if it's okay to go out of order of the staff recommendations.
Go out of order?
I would like to deal with Recommendation B first.
Recommendation D, the site plan review?
Uh, B.
Uh, B, the conditional use permit. Yeah, that's, I believe that is fine.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the conditional use permit to increase the maximum height in a cluster development and in the Shoreland Overlay District.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to deny Item B, the conditional use permit to increase the maximum height. Any discussion? Commissioner Vreeland, would you like to speak to that?
Well, I have a rather lengthy stack of folks that have written to us on double-sided paper. And folks are rightly concerned about our lakes. And as a park board commissioner, the view from the lake matters to me. And I think there's a number of other issues that folks have raised. But the Shoreland Overlay ordinance really means something to me. And it's a way that we have enhanced our city development by taking a step back from the edges of our lakes and making sure that the public benefit is more important than the private benefit. And this is a case where I think some of the folks have spoken that this will be seen. And I don't see any particular reason other than additional profit or sellability of this particular building units to warrant a change in something that is a state statute and something that is meaningful to the state, to the city, and certainly to the park board and the constituents that would like to enjoy a lake without having to see taller and taller buildings added, because the rules can be changed if there's folks that can get us to change the rules. I do not want to change the rules for this one. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I can see if anyone else would like to add anything to that. In the meantime, though, Commissioner Vreeland, we should be sure we address the required findings that are listed in there if we are going to, if we are going to make, make an approval that is not consistent with staff recommendations. So those begin on page five of the staff report. So maybe you could review those and just to make sure we have our bases covered. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Commissioner Slack.
Yeah, I'll just make some comments. This one's a real interesting, challenging project. I had to take my family out on a beautiful Sunday to take a look at the site. And I was, I was really impressed with the overall tree coverage. You know, I think that the landscape, as it transitions to the lake, is, this is a really beautiful area. And I know that we've had a lot of conversations about projects like these in Linden Hills and adjacent areas to the lakes. And I feel like in most of those cases, contextually, we could, we could approve those projects because of how they related to direct buildings and developments directly adjacent to the site. This one is challenging because it's, in my mind, it's basically a single-family. And so I do agree with Commissioner Vreeland that the building, to me, the height, is too much. I could, I think I could have go with the staff recommendation for Item B, because I do think three stories is much more appropriate than what's being shown now. But the overall mass of the building, too, is problematic for me. And the fact that there is going to be a lot of tree loss on the site. And yes, some of these trees, people don't necessarily consider great trees, but you know, hackberry is a native Minnesota tree, and there's box elder, again, native Minnesota tree. And the amount of trees that are taken out and the proposed trees that are going back in is not even close to being comparable. And so I'm going to vote in favor of Commissioner Vreeland's motion.
All right. Commissioner Vreeland.
And I don't have specific language related to the findings, but staff has already noted that this building is too high. And I would say that those findings are accurate and supported, and that this would be in addition to those findings, that there is no particular need to increase the height with the findings the staff have come up with.
And Mr. Wittenberg.
Commissioners, just to review, recall that we have a recommendation of approval and findings that support that. So if the commission does deny the application, we do need not only findings, but you will need to, at your next meeting, adopt those findings, again, at your next meeting, which we will type up and prepare for you to be adopted at your next meeting.
And so again, those findings would relate to the conditional use being detrimental, endangering the public health, safety, general welfare, injurious to the enjoyment of other property in the vicinity, adequate utilities, roads, drainage, necessarily, public facilities, traffic congestion. So we should outline those. Commissioner Gagnon.
Okay. So you're saying that, right? The. We'll also have to provide findings to support it, even though there is the state law and a city ordinance that says 35 feet or two and a half stories and very good reason for that ordinance. I moved here from Texas, where there's absolutely zero, zero protection of lakes, zero. People build around, so there's hardly any public access. There's no public appreciation. That is one of the amazing gifts of Minneapolis and the state and why, I believe, we are the number one park system in the country. One of the reasons is that it is protected. The public does appreciate that protection. And so why would we have to provide findings when the city ordinance and state law says that, I mean, I know you can have a variance from it, but why would we have to do that? But can we just say law?
Commissioners, your decision does have to be articulated through a rational basis, and that's done through findings of fact. And I've heard some references, including from Commissioners Vreeland and Slack, that sort of start to get us there. So yes, when someone's asking for departure from a rule, for example, we can't just point to the rule as the reason for denial. There actually has to be an articulated rational basis. And again, I've heard that some commissioners start down that path of articulating that, increasing the visibility of the structure from the lake, for example. That is one of the criteria in a.
Okay. So public benefit versus private benefit. There's, yeah. Okay.
All right. Commissioner Vreeland, do you have anything else?
Yes. I mean, I think that's, that's my major objection. And again, the finding that I would recommend is that the, this building has visibility from Lake Harriet rather than limited visibility, and it's 380 feet from the subject site, well within the 1,000-feet parameters. And the separations of the public street and trees, especially if the trees are removed, are not sufficient to shield this property from the intent of the Shoreland Overlay.
All right. Commissioner Magrino.
I just wanted to say that I will be voting against the motion, and I was actually kind of initially inclined to support the applicant's request for four stories. I think staff did a pretty good job outlining legally why we could grant the request for the conditional use permit. I guess I would just say sort of editorially, it's kind of frustrating, like, how much time we're spending on an eight-unit building that's below the tree line in an area that is this in demand. I think there's all sorts of adopted city policies for encouraging different kinds of housing types in the city, allowing people to age in place in an area that's relatively well-served by transit and will be well-served by transit in the future. And I just, we have certainly granted a number of conditional use permits for height in the Shoreland Overlay. And I think it's, again, sort of frustrating, the extent to which this has sort of become a social activity for some folks to come out and oppose things. And I just, it's very, well.
It's offensive to those who are here.
Well, just.
Okay. Okay. The public hearing is closed.
This is, it is, again, it's, we've definitely, we've definitely granted, we have granted conditional use permits in other areas that are not this affluent and have not been able to organize against things. And I feel that this is an example of privilege in the city. And it is, again, it's just, it's very frustrating.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Commissioner Suesi.
Thank you. I agree with Commissioner Magrino, but for different reasons. I'm stuck on the part about the findings. And I just don't think that we can, we can support and make findings. I know it's not the neighbor's choice that this be next to where they live. I know some people don't like that you'll be able to see it from other areas of the lake, but I certainly don't think that qualifies as detriment or endangering public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare. And so I, too, will be voting against the motion. I find that it's very consistent with the comp plan and the policies there. And I do agree that this is a neighborhood that's got a lot of demand for, I think, this kind of housing. I know it's too tall for some people, but I wouldn't be able to support those findings.
Commissioner Cron.
Excuse me. I, too, will be voting against the motion. And just a couple of simple points. Is there buildings visible from the lake at this exact location? I think staff's compromise is an interesting one. The Shoreland Overlay District does have a CUP process built into it as to take projects as they come and look at the specifics of each project. And also, the applicant is, in terms of stormwater, they are going above and beyond what they're actually required to do. Most buildings that are built even within the overland, Shoreland Overlay, maximums have no requirement that treat stormwater. This is a significant step in actually protecting the water quality of the lake. Thank you.
And Commissioner Slack.
Yeah, for additional facts or findings, since we need to include them. Land Use Policy 1.2, ensure appropriate transitions between uses different size, scale, and intensity. Land use policy 1.2, ensure appropriate transitions between uses different size, scale, and intensity. Even though I do believe that this is a really beautiful project, I don't think that it actually meets that land use policy. Additional ones include, under additional factors, be considered determining maximum height, scale and character surrounding uses. I don't think the staff's recommendations are appropriate there. Preservation of used landmark buildings, significant open spaces and water bodies. I think the case can be made by numerous people who have presented here tonight that those significant views or preservation of those views will be diminished. And then also, even though I do think that developer, an applicant, has done a really good job with stormwater management, I do think that there are going to be some other significant issues as it relates to the next item, prevention of soil erosion, public waters. You know, even though we didn't have a civil engineer here tonight, when you look through the stormwater plan that was handed out beforehand, it's a, it's a, it's pretty minimal what they're doing on the site. And if, if the desire here was to create a good project that really, you know, from an environmental standpoint, considered, you know, what's going to be going into the lake, what's happening on the site, I think that they could have pushed the envelope a little bit further from the, from the stormwater control side, but then also, I think, from the tree preservation side because, as I mentioned, it's hard to quantify, but large overstedged trees that exist on this site probably provide more stormwater impact mitigation than, than anything that you can do underground. And so I would love to have seen maybe some more trees preserved on the site as well.
All right. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second to deny the conditional use permit to increase the maximum height. Clerk, please call the roll.
Gagnon?
Yes.
Kronzer?
No.
Magrino?
No.
Slack?
Yes.
Sweets?
No.
Vreeland?
Aye.
So that is a tie.
Three, three. So I will vote, and I'll vote no.
So that is three to four, or four to three.
And that motion fails. So would someone like to make an alternate motion on item B? Commissioner Slack, is that, is that still, is your...
Oh, yes.
Maybe you weren't indicating. We can see if someone else would like to as well.
No, I can do it.
All right.
Sorry, I gotta find it again. I will make a motion to approve staff recommendation for item A, conditional use permit for cluster development.
All right. We have a motion to approve item B, the conditional use permit for maximum height, and that is staff recommendation, which is a maximum height of three stories or 42 feet 10 inches, whichever is less. Is there a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did item A.
Oh, excuse me. You did item A. Okay. Conditional use permit for the cluster development. That's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve staff recommendation for item A. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Aye. Magrino?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweets?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Six, zero.
That motion carries. Next, we have item B, the conditional use permit to increase the maximum height.
I make a motion to approve staff recommendation for item B.
All right. We have a motion to approve staff recommendation for item B, noting that that maximum height is three stories or 42 feet 10 inches, whichever is less. Is there, did I hear a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Gagnon?
No.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweets?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
That's five to one.
And that motion carries. Next, we have item C, which is returning a variance. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'd like the motion to approve staff recommendation for item C, returning of the variance.
We have a motion and a second to return item C, the variance for development within 40 feet of a steep slope. There is no further discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweets?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Six, zero.
That motion carries. Finally, we have item D, the site plan review. I'll note that if we, to be consistent with our approval of item B, we may want to make sure that that language is revised, reflect the three-story maximum height. Also, I know staff had recommended a 15th condition related to compliance with the window requirement. Would someone like to make a motion on item D, the site plan review?
I'll move item D, site plan review. I'd like to add another item, or actually maybe add on to item number 13, which reads, "The applicant shall provide additional trees and shrubs in required landscape yards in order to comply with minimum landscape materials for required yard standards per section 530 160 of the zoning code." I'd love to add something about applicant working with staff to ensure that larger trees are planted in compliance with the zoning code and that also to help mitigate loss of mature trees on the site, that the, no, I think that covers it, sorry. Oh, and that they would be native trees. That's what I was wanting to add there. So ensure larger trees are planted to help mitigate and that they would be native Minnesota trees.
All right. We have a motion to approve item D, the site plan review, noting that the building height is three stories, also adding a condition that the applicant complies with the window requirement in the zoning code. Also adding to condition 13, Commissioner Slack's additions for landscaping to mitigate against tree loss.
And we could take those, at least that additional one, separate.
For right now, we can see if we get a second and include it in the overall motion. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All right. Well, if there is no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweets?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Six, zero.
That motion carries. Finally, we have item E, the preliminary and final plat. Commissioner Slack?
Yes, sorry, I closed my file again. A motion to approve staff recommendation for item E, preliminary and final plat.
And is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary and final plat. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweets?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Six, zero.
That motion carries. And that concludes our discussion on item nine. Our next item for discussion is item 11, which is a zoning code text amendment. Staff, it is Mr. Wittenberg.
In front of you, you have a zoning code text amendment introduced by Councilmember Frye. The proposed changes would reexamine the way we regulate principal and accessory parking garages in the city. I've displayed a summary of kind of three different general areas of change that we're looking at related to parking garages. And you recall that the amendment was discussed at the committee, the whole meeting on September 19th. There have been a few changes since the September 19th meeting, some both substantive and kind of minor technical changes. I'll just run through, again, a summary of the language that you have in front of you for the text amendment. One of the drivers of the amendment is that the amendment would eliminate the requirement that principal parking garages in the downtown districts be below grade or integrated into a transit facility. The changes would clarify that principal parking garages, or parking garages generally, could not be counted toward a minimum floor area ratio. Where we have minimum FBRs, we're looking for a certain level of development intensity, and parking really does not meet that intent. We would be retaining an existing requirement in the downtown zoning districts that mandates commercial or residential or hotel-type uses between the ground floor of any parking garage and public streets, and that is a non-variable requirement, given where it's placed in the zoning code. Those are a summary of the downtown district's changes being proposed. And then there are several changes proposed in the site plan review chapter, chapter 530. And recall, as you well know, that standards in chapter 530 are open for alternative compliance and considering exceptions through that mechanism where the intent is met by a proposal. The first would be some strengthened language regarding screening of vehicles as well as lighting. Sometimes lighting spillover from within a garage can be a significant issue for nearby properties. Above the first floor, recall that we have quite strict standards on the first floor. Above the first floor, we would limit the percentage of street frontages that can be parking, and that is on each floor. One of the issues that Councilmember Rockwell, or Commissioner Rockwell, had mentioned at committee, the whole, was that the language needed a little bit of tweaking to clarify that that was something that applied to each floor facing the street rather than overall on a street elevation. So that change was made. We would require enclosure of this top level of parking garages, either through some sort of pergola-type structure or just complete enclosure. You'll see many residential buildings currently do that already and have their kind of amenity deck on the top level of parking garages. Another issue that was discussed a little bit more substantially at committee, the whole, was this issue of future conversion of parking garages to other uses. And I've had a fair amount of discussion about that with architects and developers, and we have retained our recommendation to encourage, rather than require, that parking garages be designed in a manner that would help facilitate future conversion. And those kinds of features, the one that is referenced in the ordinance is flat floor, which obviously helps facilitate future conversion. Another frequent issue that would currently stand in the way of that kind of conversion are the floor-to-ceiling clearances are generally less in a parking garage than you would see in a standard sort of office or residential development. In the site plan review chapter, but specific to the downtown zoning districts, we would propose to limit the square footage of parking garages in a way that ensures that the square footage of both principal and accessory garages combined would not exceed the square footage of other active uses on the same property. And again, that would be something that we could consider exceptions to through alternative compliance. And then finally, since we have an overlay district in place already along Nicollet Mall, that is a sort of easy and, I think, appropriate place to include a restriction that would prohibit parking garage frontage on all floors facing the Nicollet Mall right-of-way. Staff presented to the Downtown Minneapolis Neighborhood Association Land Use Committee, they didn't take a formal vote on the proposal, but generally expressed appreciation and support for the changes. As I mentioned, I did have had some discussions with both developers and architects about the changes. I would say there was general support for the concept, but some concern about the kind of execution and the potential for increased costs. A couple of the issues that were raised, for example, are that if we require sort of really heavy-duty screening or active functions on all sides of a parking garage, that is likely going to, in many cases, trigger the need for venting of a parking garage, whereas right now, a more of an open-air garage, you just obviously get natural ventilation. Under the building code, a certain degree of enclosure requires mechanical ventilation, which is both a significant upfront cost as well as an ongoing energy cost. There was some concern about the requirement of top-level screening with some of the feedback there being that is, is the top level really where we want that level of investment to be going in on a parking garage? There was some suggestion that increasing the costs on the top level of a parking garage may take away from the kinds of investments that would go more at the pedestrian level, street level, where you have a parking garage. Let's see, I'm trying to recall the other concerns that, as I mentioned, there were significant concerns about the practicality of encouraging, or especially if we were to require that garages be designed to facilitate future conversion to other uses. I can go into that in more depth if the commission is interested, but suffice it to say that structural loading requirements, for example, are much different for parking garages than other uses. I think it's somewhat counterintuitively. You actually need a greater structural load for uses other than parking garages. One thinks of cars and vehicles as being quite heavy, so that that is maybe a little bit of a surprise that the structural load required for other uses is actually greater for other uses compared to parking garages. So there was some sentiment that the upfront cost of building a parking garage that is truly convertible to other uses in the future would be really kind of cost prohibitive. And then, again, I think as you heard from an architect who happened to be in attendance at the committee, the whole meeting, is that the more likely scenario is that if parking garages become obsolete in the future, that they will likely be torn down for, and replaced with other uses rather than converted. That is all of my presentation, and I stand for any questions that the commission might have.
Okay. Are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Slack?
First question is, where did the crowd go? No, I think that staff has done a good job of including, incorporating all the comments. Can you explain a little bit more, under site plan review, second bullet, the 30% number and where that came from? And more specifically, you know, I've spent a lot of time since we looked at this at Cal, just kind of looking at some of our past projects, which is maybe not always the best thing to do. And I struggle with above the first floor, because I do feel like these projects, you know, they try to activate the first-floor level, you know, there's a lot of transparency. But in a lot of cases with these ramps, I feel like it, because it's really only the first floor and that the second floor is where the parking starts, that it's so noticeable. And so I kind of just want to understand the 30%, but then also want to... And so I kind of just want to understand the 30%, but then also want to push back a little bit that maybe it should include the first two floors as sort of the public realm street area, because every project that I've seen that we've approved in the last couple of years has issues with what this facade looks like starting at the second floor.
Commissioner Slack, thank you. I think the 30% figure is more or less to align with what we already have in terms of active functions at the ground level. But I concur that the street level, getting the street level right is the most important thing from a public realm standpoint. As I mentioned, the street level requirement in the downtown districts is significantly more restrictive than the limitations outside of the downtown districts. We did look at best practices, and I saw some standards in the 50% range in a couple of cities, so I recognize that the 30% limitation is relatively strict. I think if you look at the 200 Central project that Alatus and ESG designed as an example, staff and the commission really pushed the applicant in that case to design more active street frontages, I think, on all levels. And if my recollection is correct, that we ended up with completely active functions on all levels facing Central and along Second, I believe we were able to get to sort of a 60% active, 40% non-active split. I think one thing that provides some level of comfort for the development community is that alternative compliance is an outlet, certainly on smaller sites. It will not be a surprise to me if we see a fair number of alternative compliance requests. Example, just a block or so from here is the Foremark project, for example. I've heard mixed opinions on the commission about the treatment of that parking podium. Certainly, that site is small enough that underground parking probably would not have been feasible, and there may not have been a practical alternative to doing what they did on the parking podium levels as well. So that probably would be an example where there would be few alternatives to granting alternative compliance.
All right. Commissioner Kronzer and then Commissioner Reeland.
So I missed the committee, the whole meeting that this was discussed, so Jason's been trying to get me up to speed, so I do have just a couple of questions. On the second page of the text edits, it's D parking garages. So Jason, you've got number one, design, all additions comply with what's below. So A, B, C, D, and E and F are all of those except for what's noted in A, do those apply to all zoning districts?
Commissioner Kronzer, that is correct.
That is correct.
They would apply to all zoning districts.
Okay, so that is great news. I did have the question about 30% that Commissioner Slack has, so I guess we'll just see how the applicants react to that percentage. It does seem a little low in my mind, but I think that's fine.
Commissioners, if I may, I should note that one of our staff actually suggested, and this was an interesting suggestion, that we consider that we look at all the perimeter of a building and allow 30% of the entire perimeter, which could allow, you know, greater 30% on one elevation if you did a better job on, you know, the other elevation, I guess. I thought that was an interesting thought, but would certainly be a little bit different than how we are used to looking at kind of each elevation and isolation and the calculating window area, for example, or active functions.
Yeah. Would have been 30% on each elevation or 30% total of all four elevations combined?
That would have been, one suggestion was that we look at 30% of the total street frontage, I believe was the suggestion, whereas right now, we're looking at 30% of each street-facing elevation and isolation.
That sounds like a good alternative compliance argument. My other question, Jason, is you mentioned it when referring to Commissioner Slack about the additional requirements for active uses in the downtown districts. Can you just explain what that additional requirements are? That's the one piece I just couldn't tie together.
Sure. Commissioner Kronzer spelled out in each of the downtown zoning districts, so all but the four districts. It states that actual active uses, that says the ground floor of principal and accessory parking garages shall have commercial, residential, office, or hotel uses located between the parking garage and any public sidewalk, except where frontage is needed to provide access to the facility. So again, those are standards that have no authorized variance from them in the downtown districts. You simply just have to meet that requirement.
And what is in the other, the non-downtown districts, what is the requirement for street level?
Sure. The street level is that 70% of the ground level has to contain active functions, which means 70% that is, that does not include parking, storage, or mechanical.
Commissioner Reeland.
Yes, it's a long evening, but since I was thinking about parking ramps, in Atlanta, by the convention center, they have parking ramps where the cars extend past the edge of the parking ramp. So the back ends of the cars extend so you can see all of them. So you go down the street and you see the butts of every car, because they back up the car till a wheel hits the stop, and then the back of the car launches out. I'm not suggesting that is our new policy, but there are different views of parking ramps and what they should look like. I did have a question about the top level enclosed and screened, and I used to build the Dayton's Flower Shows and Christmas Shows, and we used to build things on the eighth-floor ramp, and it was kind of cool. What's the rationale for, I mean, maybe these are interesting public spaces that maybe we don't want to screen or enclose, but what's the, what's kind of the rationale of hiding the cars at the top?
Sure. Commissioner Reeland, I think that's a really good question. In my view, when a residential developer encloses the top level of their parking garage, it's partly, it's partly that it's a natural place for kind of an outdoor amenity deck, but I think it's also a recognition that units that kind of directly overlook that top-level parking garage, if it's just open-air parking, are going to be more difficult to rent at a price that you would be able to get otherwise. It's just similar to how we restrict surface parking in the downtown zoning districts. You know, there's an element of aesthetic quality and that it may just be more difficult to lease both residential or commercial space that looks down on those kinds of spaces.
Is there any evidence of that? I mean, so many of the hotels I've been in, you're looking down at cars or something similar. Is there, I mean?
I don't have, I don't have specific data that would back that up.
Okay.
Just sort of anecdotal.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but I'm just curious as to how we could prove that. Thank you.
Commissioner McGree.
Sorry, I was just talking to Commissioner Kronzer. I was just going to make sort of a general comment. I think this is definitely a step in the right direction. I would kind of add, though, because, you know, we are talking a lot about design and like, obviously, we've got these two examples here on the projector, and like, obviously, it's not ideal, and there's a lot of talk about podiums that don't look great. But I do live a block from LPM there, and it definitely was pretty ugly for the first year it was there, but then after a while, you don't really notice it. You know, the trees get a little bit bigger, and there's two different places with sidewalk seating, and it's actually fairly pleasant to walk by. And so I think as long as we're doing a good job with the street level, I tend to not want to get too concerned about the podium part. Sometimes that kind of becomes a proxy for being unhappy about a building in general, and so just wanted to make that general comment.
Any other questions? Commissioner Slack.
I still think it looks ugly. The text language that Commissioner Reeland was talking about is interesting because I find it sort of this duality with us pushing parking to center developments, wrapping, you know, developments all four sides, and then having to require the center parking area to be covered. I do think that covering it is appropriate. I just think that there's some interesting push and pull there. You know, we're trying to, trying to get parking off the streets, and so we have developers put it internal to their buildings, and then we're telling them that we can't see them from the sky now either. So it'll be interesting to see future development proposals come together, come forward and what some of the, some of the options might look like as it relates to that.
Commissioners, related to that, I just put on the overhead what is, was the Mill Quarter ramp built in the early 2000s, I believe, that as far as these kinds of rules that we're talking about in terms of masking a parking garage, that's probably the gold standard among more recent parking garages in the city. And clearly, they did not cover their top floor. I don't know that I've ever been on the top floor or noticed whether there, whether the units on the back side of those dwelling units look down on that garage or not.
Commissioner Kronzer.
Just since we're talking about it, I'm pretty sure this is all single-loaded housing, where there's a corridor against the parking structure.
I think that's probably, probably correct, given the depth.
So there's another good argument for alternative compliance.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Would someone like to make a motion? Any concerns about any of this?
Commissioners, I would, I guess, say if there are real concerns about the kind of 30% limitation, and you think that that's something that we would be really regularly entertaining alternative compliance from, that I'd certainly feel free to recommend a different number.
You know, I think, I think since we do have the option of granting alternative compliance, maybe it's fine to be more conservative and go with 30%. I think you're probably right in an instance like Foremark, where you have a very small site and there just aren't a lot of other practical options. You know, we still have the opportunity to allow that. I think alternative compliance would also kind of give us a little more leverage to ensure that the screening of that parking garage maybe looks a little better than that one, for instance. You know, the parking podiums are something we've seen a little bit more of in the last few years, and I think there are some good examples of how those have been done, and some that are, that are maybe less good. So I think it's important for us to address that, but still leave ourselves a little bit of flexibility there.
Commissioner McGree.
Maybe, so it sounds like you all had this discussion at least a little bit. It might make some sense, just looking like, for example, at this sort of lot we have right there, if somebody were to build a building with a parking podium on that remaining parking lot, you know, would we want them to sort of focus the 30% of the frontage in one area that looks really good? Or, you know, I have to imagine in a situation like that, they'd probably sort of do, you know, the corner on Washington there, and then second, they'd have like a stairwell or something like that. It's not, just thinking of like a lot of the types of projects that end up getting or end up having parking podiums, it might be hard to really make use of 30%. And so, you know, one thing we could do is in the design area there in B, if we were to change it to no more than 30% of a linear frontage, strike each floor and just put like the structure facing a public street, public sidewalk, or public pathway, I feel like it would give architects a little bit more to work with there, and they'd actually use that space and maybe put some housing units on, say, the Washington Avenue side and the Park Avenue side, if we were using this example in front of us. I don't know if people are amenable to that or not.
Well, in this case, it's different, right? Because it's all liner housing now, so you don't see any of the parking. So I can, sorry.
No, go ahead. I was just going to say, so like hypothetically, if somebody were to build a new building on the sort of the left side here, and they were to do sort of like a, you know, Nickon Fifth-type building where there's a tower and a parking podium right there, requiring, say, the Second Street side to be 30% active uses above the ground floor, you know, wouldn't it maybe make more sense to concentrate that 30%? I think people would actually use the 30% and maybe put liner housing on one side rather than, you know, doing like a stairwell or something along the back of the building. Does that kind of make sense? I think we would get more, we would get actual, we would get active uses if we allowed them to concentrate it in one area rather than having 30% on each block face.
And that's just 30% for the second floor?
Yep. Above the ground floor and any structure that includes. So yeah, just kind of referring to the parking podium in this, in this situation.
Commissioner Sweets.
Just in this case, we have approved a building actually to go up on that spot that's going to have underground parking.
Yes. Just using that spot as an example.
And I live in a building that's like this one, and if this one is like the one I live in, you can't see the rooftop parking from inside. All the windows go the other way. It's actually a pretty nice way to do it if you have to have uncovered parking, which I now wish we didn't have now that I've heard this discussion about covering it.
Commissioner Kronzer, did you have something?
I was going to make a motion.
All right.
Make a motion, yeah. I'd like to make a motion to approve the text amendment. I would like to make one edit, and that is to subpart E, under parking garages, design, and it's the, the part about exterior design of the parking structures and the sloping floors. So let me just read what I'm proposing, and I can speak to that in a second. All garage elevations shall use exterior materials to cover and diminish the visibility of any sloping floor. So same idea, it's just saying what to do rather than what not to do, and it's a little more specific on what I think the intent of what staff has written is. I could read that again if that would be helpful. No?
No.
I think, I think that's good. And in this case, since it's a text amendment, we can just pass this along with some notes and staff can continue to work on that language. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner McGreeno.
And so I'll also make a motion for a friendly amendment for the situation I just described in design, subpart B, to strike the language each floor and substitute the And I'd be happy to elaborate more if people are having trouble envisioning the change there.
Yeah, it might not hurt.
Yeah, it, so I'm really referring pretty specifically to buildings that have parking podiums, so this does refer to just above the ground floor. And I just, I think it would, I think, kind of like Mr. Whittenberg was saying, we might end up seeing a whole lot of alternative compliance requests for this, because it's going to be really hard in a site, you know, this one is being built here in front of us, but if you have like a half-block like that, I, I think it would make a lot more sense to let people concentrate the active uses on one side of the building rather than having to like run a hallway around to the other side of the building through a parking garage to put some residential units back there. I think just, it makes a lot of sense sort of circulation-wise and, yeah, so anyway.
All right. Any, and I don't know if we necessarily need a formal vote on that. If we just pass along those comments, as long as there's general agreement that we're fine adding that.
I guess the way I, I read what Commissioner McGreeno is saying is, if you take away each floor, it's still, it's still compliant, require on each elevation except for you could lower the active uses. So maybe floors two and three could have active uses, but four and five are parking, at least the way it's edited, but Jason's making a funny face.
I think I might be a little uncertain now of the intent of the proposed change.
So my, the intent was, I feel like it'd be easier to draw it. So if you're, you know, for requiring 30% of the frontage on, on each, of each floor, you're going to end up with, you know, in say, an example like Nickon Fifth or Nicollet 365, you know, they're going to have to run a hallway like back through the parking garage from like the main area where they have units or some kind of active use, like it's going to be separate. And I think, like you said, it's, we're going to end up And I think, like you said, it's, we're going to end up granting a lot of requests for alternative compliance, because it's not going to have to, it won't be contiguous. And so that doesn't necessarily make sense from like a building's circulation standpoint, and I.
So just to be clear, Commissioner McGree, is, is it your intent that we would be looking at each elevation in isolation though, or that we'd be looking at 30% limit of the entire street frontage in totality?
It would be the whole street frontage together.
Every street frontage combined together?
Yeah.
What do you think about if that is the intent of then saying to no more than the 30% of the entire linear frontage of the structure facing the public street, public sidewalk, or public pathway?
Above the ground floor.
Yep. It, right. I think the only language that's being specifically replaced, if I understood your motion correctly, was the, literally the words each floor.
Unless I'm misreading it also.
And if I can just.
I think I may have had the math the other way around there. I also was not a committee of the whole for this, unfortunately.
That if we're looking at a, say, this is an elevation due to a parking garage, and there are three levels. As written, we would be looking again at 30% of this, 30% of this, and 30% of this. Is it your intent that we would be looking at 30% of the overall?
It was.
Structure? That's, that's part of what has me a little confused about the removal of the language each, each floor.
I think I kind of lost where you were going with that, too. Maybe I'll, maybe I'll withdraw the, the amendment. I think I might have misread this to say, I thought that this was reading sort of the other way around, that there had to be at least 30% active functions on each side, and I think it's the other way around, now that I'm looking at it a little more closely. Sorry about that. Sorry for wasting everyone's time.
Oh, that's okay. Commissioner Kronzer.
Well, I just think this is a good example of what alternative compliance is built into this, and we'll see as the projects come in. And, you know, let's have this conversation in two years and see, you know, if we need to adjust something. So it's, I think we'll be equipped to do that.
Anything else? We have a motion to approve with changes. There is no further discussion. We can vote on this, I suppose. Should we just do a voice vote? But I think so. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed, and that motion carries, so that concludes our discussion on item 11. So that concludes our business for today. We have committee of the whole on Thursday, and we are adjourned.